Good evening. My name is Jason Delisle. I'm president of the Speedway Town Council. It is 7:00 PM on December 9th, and I call our meeting to order. No gavel tonight. We'll first start off with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, for introductions, to my right is our town manager, Grant Kleinhans.
Good evening.
Town councillor Sarah Gardner.
Good evening.
Councillor Sean Harold.
Good evening.
And to my left is our town attorney Ted Nolting.
Good evening.
Our clerk treasurer Philip Faust.
Good evening.
Town councillor Vince Noblet.
Good evening.
And our vice president, Nick Sturgeon.
Good evening.
All right, our first item is approval of minutes from our November 25th, 2024 meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve our minutes from the previous meeting.
I'll second it.
All right, any questions or comments regarding our minutes? And I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of approving our minutes from the November 25th, 2024 meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 5-0. Next item is approval of the memorandum of our administrative session of the Speedway Town Council on November 25th, 2024.
I'll make a motion that we approve the memorandum of our administrative session from the Speedway Town Council on November 25th, 2024.
I'll second.
All right, any questions or comments regarding our memorandum? Call for a vote. All those in favor of approving our memorandum of the administrative session of Speedway Town Council on November 25th, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 5-0. Next item is approval of the 2025 Town of Speedway designated holiday calendar. Grant?
Yeah, thank you. So here are 12 approved holidays for the year in 2025. The Town Council simply needs to make a motion to accept and adopt this.
I'll make a motion that we assert the designated town holidays for 2025 as presented.
I'll second.
All right, any questions or comments?
Grant, are there any changes or anything from '24?
We had 13 in 2024 because of the presidential and gubernatorial elections. This year, we just have the 12. That's the only change.
All right, if there's no more questions, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of approving our 2025 Town of Speedway designated holiday calendar, say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? That passes 5-0. Next item is the approval of the 2025 Town Council meeting dates. Grant?
Yes, thank you. So these are your proposed Town Council regular meetings in 2025. You'll notice it is the second and fourth Monday of every month. Those meetings are at 7:00 PM. From time to time, though, due to conflicts or issues or even no business that is needed to come to the council, we can and have canceled those or rescheduled. So this is what is laid out at the beginning of the year. That does not mean it cannot be changed. We also, from time to time, have additional meetings that are not listed on this schedule. So we're asking for you to approve this. This will be posted on our town website, put into our calendar so that everybody is aware of when those meetings are. And then we give notice before those meetings as a reminder of when those meetings are coming up. We also are committed, and we've done this since I started putting the full packet on the town website so that residents can download it, review it, read through it, and we videotape all of our meetings and put those on YouTube.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we approve the 2025 Town Council meeting dates.
I'll second.
All right, any questions or comments?
Yeah, just a quick question, Grant. I know we ran into this last year with spring break, fall break, and having to change that. How would the public know that we are giving proper notice with those changes? And then if we move a date, just so that everyone's clear as to where to look for that?
Yep, so we try to do posting on all of our social media accounts, on the front page of the town website. We also post those here in the municipal center in the front. Any of those changes are posted in that way.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Yeah, we're not required to publish a notice in a paper or...
Right.
They're not read typically anyway, but that's how we try to make sure people are aware of those changes.
All right, any other questions? I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of approving our 2025 Town Council meeting dates, say aye.
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 Opposed? That passes 5-0. All right, our next item is approval of amendment to the agreement with Kroger, Gardas, and Rigas for the Town Attorney Services.
Yes. So thank you. As you know, Ted has been serving as our town attorney since July of this year. That was set out at a fee of $5,000 per month as a retainer fee. We also had agreement that as large projects came about, they would provide us a proposal. We would provide them compensation in that amount. Due to the different things that we do every year and all the projects that we've worked on, Ted approached us. We had a discussion. We're going to propose to increase that monthly retainer fee to $6,500. We believe that that should cause them not to have any losses according to the attendance at our meetings, our S R C meetings. We've reviewed this. Ted has prepared it. He's our attorney. I assume he did a good job with the agreement. But we recommend approval of this, and we will start this payment in January of 2025.
I'll make a motion that we approve the amendment to the agreement with K G R for the Town Attorney Services.
I'll second.
All right, any questions or comments?
My only comment is, we had a really good deal, $5,000, and that has run its course. I think we knew that when we had that amount. I think Ted knew that that was actually a little less than the previous town attorney that we were paying. It was more of a trial-type situation. They've done a good job. We want to move forward with this. Thank you.
I'd just like to make a comment, in fact, that today's litigation is more and more complicated and with the number of contracts and protecting the Town of Speedway is utmost. And Ted, I appreciate the work that you've done so far in keeping us between the lines and making sure that things get looked at from several different perspectives. And that's critical to having good contracts and keeping us in there. So, thank you, Ted.
All right, if there are no additional comments, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of approving our amendment to the agreement with Kroger, Gardas, and Rigas for the Town Attorney Services, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 5-0. Our next item is approval of supplemental planning and engineering services agreement with Keyser Consulting for the 25th Street Reconstruction Project. Grant?
Thank you. On February the 12th, the Town Council approved the initial design agreement. That design agreement had in it a proviso that the plans... The agreement we were doing was only up to 90% of the final plans. So this supplement will finish out that planning process and design, but also add the bidding services that are required, putting the... And those are listed under Exhibit 1. Preparation of final design plans, bid and contract documents, pre-bid activities, which include pre-bid conference, that kind of thing. Bid solicitations, bid opening and evaluation, recommendation to us, and then post-bid services, reviewing and approving the contract, that kind of thing. The amount of this additional supplemental service is $77,842. It will be paid from the general obligation bond that the council issued earlier this fall. That will bring the total contract amount for the design, which is a very reasonable fee, I want to reiterate that, to $255,342 for that roughly $3.5 million project. So I'll answer any questions that you might have.
I'll make a motion that we approve the supplemental planning and engineering service agreement with Keyser Consulting for the 25th Street Reconstruction Project.
I'll second it.
All right, any questions or comments for Grant?
Grant, you might just kind of review for the public position, the road, how far 25th Street that this covers.
Sure, yeah. So this project specifically covers a full reconstruction, which includes full-depth asphalt removal, base, not repair, base removal and redoing, new curb, new gutter, new sidewalk, all the way from Lynn Hurst to Parkwood. So it's not the full length of 25th Street. It is the worst part of 25th Street. This road was rebuilt about 11 years ago, and it has not stood up well. So we need to do a full reconstruction of that. Once we are done with this road, that will be a 50-year road, no doubt. Because we're getting the base fixed. If your foundation's not good, your road's not going to last that long.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, if there are no additional questions, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of approving our supplemental planning and engineering services agreement with Keyser Consulting for the 25th Street Reconstruction Project, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 5-0. Next item is approval of bids and contract for salt trucks. Grant?
Yes, so you might remember this was on your last agenda. We had one minor kind of hiccup with the low bidder. They hadn't met the spec 100%, and it was a very minor... It was a control. So in discussions with our town attorney, we approached them about ensuring that it met the spec. They were willing to do that at no additional cost. Therefore, Stoops Freightliner, the low bid from Stoops Freightliner for these two salt trucks is $487,000. It's important to note that that is about $80,000 lower than the next nearest bidder. That's why we were trying to make sure this ended up working out. Not 80,000, 70,000. I apologize, my math. So now that that has been corrected, we recommend approval of that low bid from Stoops and ask for us to be authorized to do what the clerk treasurer needs to do to execute those agreements and get those vehicles ordered and then paid for. I'll answer any questions that you might have.
I'll make a motion that we approve the bid and contract for the salt trucks.
I'll second.
All right, any questions for Grant?
Yeah, Grant, when will these be delivered so we're ready for the snow?
Rob's not in the audience. Philip, do you happen to remember off the top of your head? Or is it on that document?
It's not on this document.
Are these replacing current? Are these new?
Yeah.
They're new, but they're replacing other vehicles in our fleet.
Like, are those working now?
They're near the end of their life, yeah.
So that won't be like, we don't have salt trucks?
No, no, we've got the equipment.
We can bring it up in next meeting, just, you know...
Okay, I'm sorry. That's a good question. I don't have the answer.
No problem.
No, it's not going to take a year. So...
Yeah.
But it's not going to be next week either, I don't think.
Yeah.
And correct me if I'm wrong, these are being paid for by federal funding?
They are, yes. The ARP funds that we received three years ago, 2021.
All right, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of approving our bids and contract for the salt trucks, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 5-0. The next item is ordinance 1403, establishing jobs, salaries, wages, and compensation to be paid certain offices, positions, and jobs within the Town of Speedway for the year 2025, and repealing all ordinances or parts thereof in conflict therewith. Philip?
Thank you. This is our second reading on the salary ordinance. The first reading at the November 25th meeting. As discussed then, the sort of Word document portion details some different certification pays, how we handle holiday pay, some certain issues with retirement. And then the meat of the ordinance is really Exhibit A that outlines for each department, the different positions, what the base salary would be as compared to 2024. So base salary would be before the certification pays, before longevity, things like that.
All right, I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance number 1403, establishing jobs and salaries, wages, and compensation to be paid certain offices, positions, and jobs within the Town of Speedway, Indiana for the year 2025, and repealing all ordinances or parts thereof in conflict therewith on our second reading.
Do we have a second?
Yeah, I'll second.
All right, any questions or comments for Philip?
It is what it is.
Okay. All right, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of approving ordinance 1403, which establishes jobs, salaries, wages, and compensation to be paid certain offices, positions, and jobs within the Town of Speedway for the year 2025, and repealing all ordinances or parts thereof in conflict therewith. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
That passes 4-1. Next item is review and approval of property and casualty insurance quotes for 2025. Philip?
Thank you. So I outlined a little bit in our administrative session, our property and casualty insurance, including our cyber policy expires at the end of this year and would be up for renewal on January 1st. The carrier that we currently have, Tokyo Marine, let us know that they are not renewing. And so we are already in the process of trying to solicit comparative quotes anyways, but that process has not been completed. Tokyo Marine is willing to extend our current policy till March 1st, which will allow us additional time to work with the other carriers to confirm a best quote. And so I'm asking that you would hopefully move to grant me the authority to accept an extension of that policy through March 1st at generally the same terms and allowing me to negotiate up to $60,000 for that, for the premium for those two additional months.
I'll make a motion that we approve the property and casualty insurance quotes for 2025 as presented by the clerk treasurer.
I'll second.
Okay, any questions or comments?
I didn't know if you wanted to share a little bit. I know we talked about it, but just again, to kind of understand what's happening. It's on a maybe high-level term.
So, you know, property and casualty insurance covers everything from our automobiles to our physical buildings, encompasses liability policies with regards to employees and police officers, and we obviously have a specific cyber writer. The insurance industry has been in a pretty tough market, particularly this last year. And the explanation I've been given is that this... That our current carrier is retreating from the local government market in Indiana. And so that has put us in a position of trying to find another carrier. I'm told it's a bit of a niche market. There aren't, you know, not every insurance company that will insure your house will also insure a town. So we have a smaller pool to draw from there. And then additionally, with the item issues that we've talked about in the past, we have some potential additional pollution issues that we need to shore up with the insurance carriers there. So that's the landscape that we're looking at that I think makes the move to a March 1st renewal, giving us a little bit more breathing room to work through those issues beneficial.
You feel good having a few more months? Do you feel confident that we'll be insured?
I think that there are likely people who will insure us. We may have to pay more than we wanted to.
Right.
So, worst-case scenario, we don't get any offers back. Where does that put us at that point?
It puts us in an interesting realm. I've been asking that question, and the insurance brokers don't want to answer it fully, I guess, because they keep saying it'll work out. I think at that point, then, you're looking at being self-insured, and we have to manage our risk profile in-house. But I think the odds of that happening are not particularly high. I think that there's just... There's a price point at which it makes sense for someone to insure us that just may be, you know, more than we had originally thought we were going to have to pay.
I'm just wondering, you know, they've had hurricanes in Florida, North Carolina, and it's affecting us in Speedway, Indiana. So all their rates are adjusting or even they're dropping their commercial clients? What are other towns and municipalities doing to overcome it? Because we're not the only one, right?
Right. You know, I... There are still companies out there that will insure. So I think that they're... I mean, now I'm hypothesizing, I guess, in this way, that they are looking to other companies. So we obviously have, you know, a few factors that don't play into every other community. So having IMS and all the benefits of that, but there's also, from an insurance perspective, that provides some unique things for an insurance company to factor in.
Right, okay. Well, thank you.
All right, any other questions, comments? I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of approving our property and casualty insurance quotes for 2025, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 5-0. All right, our next item is review and approval of workers' compensation insurance quotes for 2025. Philip?
So Brown and Brown is our insurance broker for workers' compensation. I asked them to take it out to market and see if we could get any better deals. In your packet, you will see on page 13 to 14 the different insurance companies that they got far enough in the quote process with to get answers on. IPEP, the Indiana Public Employers Plan, is a nonprofit entity that offers workers' compensation here in Indiana. That's who we currently have. They've done well for us generally. They're the only ones that came back with a quote to us, so I'm asking that you approve their quote, which will be a renewal premium of $209,089. That is an increase over last year's premium. In large part, that's attributable to the fact that they tie it to your salaries. So as we increase compensation, then the exposure on workman's comp goes up.
I'll make a motion that we approve the workers' compensation insurance quote provided by our clerk treasurer.
I'll second.
Okay, any questions or comments for Philip?
Just a quick question. Philip, I know you said an increase from last year. Is that a percentage increase? Is that a dollar amount?
So on page nine, you'll see at the top, our expiring premium is $190,000. It's going up to $209,000.
Thank you.
All right, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of approving our workers' compensation insurance quotes for 2025, say aye.
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 Opposed? That passes 5-0. Next item is approval of claims and utility adjustments. Philip?
Yes, I have requests for both for you this evening, and they span the period of time of November 21st through December 4th of this year. The utility adjustments are for four customers and span two pages. The claims span 12 pages and are in the total amount of $2,311,612.84. I would ask for your approval.
I'll make a motion that we approve the claims and utility adjustments.
I'll second it.
Any questions or comments? All right, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of approving our claims and utility adjustments, say aye.
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 Opposed? Those pass 5-0. Next is our report from department supervisors, and we will start with communications and Cheryl McElroy.
Hi, Council. I'm always waiting for you to change it as I'm walking up here. Just a couple reminders is all I'm sharing tonight. The community e-newsletter went out a couple of weeks ago, and it's just an email that provides a summary of any events, news, or announcements that went out on our other media channels. Goes to residents and businesses who have signed up for it. The December edition will go out probably next week. If anyone still wants to receive them, they've not signed up. You can do so from our website. The town food drive is still going on. Drop-off is available here at the municipal center lobby until this Friday, December 13th. We'll make arrangements next week for the deliveries to be made to the food pantries. Chief Fishburne and Street Superintendent Rob Wetnike usually help with the deliveries. Our next movie on Main is this Friday, December 13th. It is at the Plaza on Main again. As of right now, weather is looking fine. I feel like a weather announcer here. Clear in the 40s, but we do have patio heaters this time that were purchased by the Lions Club. So that will help a little bit. The movie we're showing is National Lampoon's Christmas Vacation. It was selected and sponsored by Dawson's on Main. Just bring your lawn chairs and bundle up, and it's actually pretty fun to do. The movie starts at 6:30. If anyone wants to come out at 6 o'clock, I've had the town Christmas camper decorations set there, and we have a Clark Griswold life-size cutout. We can do selfies. We can do selfies, and if it's warm enough, we can have a Cousin Eddie costume contest if anyone, if any of you want to participate, you're welcome to, or the community. So anyway, that is this coming Friday. And then something for the community, just to mark your calendars, for 2025, the state of the town is set for February 25th, 2025, and I will have details soon for that.
All right.
Thank you, Cheryl.
Yeah, thanks, Cheryl.
Next is our economic development with Carmen.
I'm out of order.
We bumped you up.
I see that. Okay. So yes, good evening, councillors. As most of you know, I've put in my resignation, and December 20th will be my last day here at the town of Speedway. I didn't make this decision lightly, but I do feel that it's the right move for me and my family at this time of my life and in my career. So I do want to sincerely thank you all for allowing me to be a part of your community, if only for a few months. It's really been an honor to work with all of you, and I just wish you continued success in your redevelopment efforts. So for the past couple of weeks, I've been focusing on getting together some transition documents so that I can just hand everything off to the SRC and, sorry, Grant, and the next economic development director. So I just wanted to know a couple items that will be coming before you in the next, the next meeting sometime in January. The tax abatement request that you all heard about last month, or in October, is, from Dalarra, is still moving forward. Last I heard, they put in their application through the city and the state processes recently, and that will be voted on by the Speedway Town Council in January. Again, I'll have that timeline all written out, and the resolutions and everything ready to go. The redevelopment commission is still interested in providing a loan program for the business community. It's currently on hold until a new economic development director is in place and hired, but I have everything written out and saved so that someone can pick it up where I left it off, if, if that's something that everyone wants to just still move forward with in the future. And finally, just wanted to note, I believe you all have had some communications about this, but the redevelopment commission is looking to create a tax increment financing district, a TIF district at the 16th and Lynnhurst area. So right now, we're in all the statutory steps, working with our CPA and our attorneys to do all of those documents. The declaratory resolution will come before the SRC on Monday, and then you all will vote on the declaratory at your next meeting, and then confirmation resolution, confirmatory resolution can happen in January or after that, I believe. So I think it's a really great next step in thinking about that area as a neighborhood node for your community. So that's all I have. Any questions?
I got one question for you. You might just tell the public, as far as Dalarra, what, what are they investing in, in their building?
Yes.
For the tax abatement?
Yep, sure. I don't have the total amount for the investment off the top of my head, but I believe it's around $7 million. They are doing some interior and eventually some exterior renovations for the entirety of Dalarra on the interior, but specifically focusing on the half of the building that's on the southern half that was owned by another entity. For Purdue Motorsports Engineering Program will be moving in there, so they're reconfiguring some of the spaces, and they're also buying equipment that will be shared, to my understanding, by the students and Dalarra employees. Eventually, and they're working on the finalized timeline, which I believe is part of what has delayed the application process a little bit for the abatement, but there will be a extension built on to the exterior of the building and behind in the eastern part of the building to allow for more space for equipment.
And what's the timeline on that abatement?
It is a 10-year abatement.
Okay.
With the first, I believe, first three years at 100%, and then tapers down after that. No, it's a six-year, I'm sorry.
Six years?
Yeah.
Okay, that's even better.
Yeah.
That's all I got.
Just want to wish you good luck in your future endeavors. Thank you so much for everything you've done in your time here, and we're going to miss you, but good luck to you and your family as you move on to your next role.
Thank you, thank you, I appreciate that.
Yeah, I echo that, Carmen, thanks for the time we've had getting to know each other, and again, just excited for your future, but sad for us, but excited for you.
Appreciate that.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Carmen. Next is police with Chief Upchurch.
Good evening, council. You changed the order, dropped in the seating evidently, I guess, so.
She'll be back, she'll be gone next month.
I'll move back up, hopefully. The department's applied for an Edward Byrne grant to update our active shooter kits for each officer. This would, the grant would include four ballistic shields and two ballistic rifle shields that would go along with the active shooter kits. The amount of the grant's going to be for just under $65,000, and the good news with that is, it's at no cost to the town, so there's no matching funds. We'll keep you updated on the progress for that. To go into some of our statistics through the end of November, so far, our officers have responded to 25,263 calls for service. They've issued 6,262 citations, investigated 683 crashes, and when we look at our crime statistics through the end of November compared to the end of November 2023, our sexual assaults are down 33%, our robberies are down 53%, our assaults are down 7%, burglaries down 42%, our vehicles thefts are up just slightly at 4%, and our thefts are down 8%. So, and that's all I have.
Great, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Have a good evening. Next is fire with Chief Fishburne.
Evening, council. Sorry for my voice, got a little frog in my throat. Wanted to let you know that our new engine has been put in service. It was a little bit earlier than we had hoped. We had an issue with our now reserve engine, so we put that into service, and we will still have a brief dedication. Brian is working on the documentary that takes us from the early spec all the way through with the tour of the factory. And tonight, I want to publicly thank Captain Corey Ray, who was on that spec committee, Private Dave Turpin, Private Derek Norcross, and one of our retirees, because that process took a while, Darren Wood. They put in a lot of hours, they educated themselves, they asked the right questions. It was just a really, really good crew, and I want to thank them publicly. So recruit school is going well for our two candidates, and our companies are getting to go and participate when they're needed. Sometimes that gets called off, sometimes they have more people plan to help, but both recruits are getting very, very good reviews. I did want to ask, came to my mind, so I made a note, on the 25th Street reconstruction, if Chief Milhorne and I could be copied on some of those plans so that we can work with Station 89's crews to kind of know those dates, and I know Rob will be a part of it. Speaking of which, Rob, I texted Rob, it's about an eight to nine-month delivery on the two salt trucks.
Not quite a year, but.
He, he got, he got back with me, so. The other, the other thing before I give you our stats is, we have extended our application process because we're just wanting to get a larger number, and, you know, in Marion County, there are a lot of other places people can apply, so we've extended that a month to try to get more candidates, you know, in our pool. And I told you previously that we're not requiring to be EMTs to also try to do that, so I will keep you posted on that. Our November stats, 295 runs, 65% of those EMS-related, and 35% of those were fire-related. So if you don't have any questions?
I have a quick question.
Yeah.
Are you guys currently understaffed, or are you kind of anticipating for future retirements, or just getting ahead of the game?
Well, you ask.
Yes.
You know, in Marion County, it's tough, it's tough to recruit, you know? We have people that are looking at lateral situations because of pay and those sorts of things. We, we know we have some people in the IFD recruit school, City of Lawrence is doing a lateral, and so, you know, all of that affects the landscape.
Right.
And I know you guys have tough decisions to make, but, you know, I just wanted to answer your question and share that with you.
Yeah, thank you.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Hope you all have a Merry Christmas. I probably won't be at the second meeting, so.
Thanks, Chief. Thank you, Chief. Next is Parks and Rec with Tammy Smith.
Good evening. First of all, I want to start off by thanking the police department for escorting Santa and keeping our event area safe last Wednesday for Light the Night. We had another successful event. We did have a little challenge with the gusts of winds that kept coming up, but we made a few adjustments and still had a successful event. I also want to mention that we have an elves workshop coming up a week from tomorrow, so next Tuesday, December 17th. There are still spots available. This is a workshop done here at the municipal center for students, Speedway students only, in grades kindergarten through 12th. They come in and they can pick out a variety of, we have a variety of different craft-type items that they get to make themselves. They get to decorate wrapping paper or gift bag, as well as making a greeting card that they can present a gift to a parent or grandparent or something, and that they get to pick out all on their own. That workshop is free to Speedway kids, thanks to a generous donation made by Mr. Jim Robinson, who donates generously each year, the seven years I've been here. So we want to thank Mr. Jim Robinson for his donation to be able to offer this workshop for free. They can register their child, their child must be registered, and they can do so online on the Speedway Parks and Rec section of the website. There's a link there to get registered. If they have any issues, they can call my office, and I'll walk them through it. And then looking ahead for, we, I used to do a program called Winter Wonderland Prince and Princess Ball. We have not done that since the pandemic, but we, it looks like we may be able to start that back up next year. We're looking at a date of February 1st, so if everything works out, this is just a little teaser, we should have something out there by the end of this week, hopefully, so that might make a good Christmas gift to present to a child or something. But what that is, it's kind of in the premise of a father-daughter dance, or, but it's not just fathers-daughters, it's for any parent or grandparent with a child, and we make it special for them that day. There's the little prince and princesses that come, we'll have music and snacks, and make them feel special that day. And that's all I have.
Thanks, Tammy.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. I just wanted to thank Tammy for all the hard work that she did putting Light the
Night together, Tammy. That was really enjoyable evening. There's, all the kids were there, Santa Claus was there, the choirs were singing, so it was a good event for the town. Also wanted to thank Cheryl and Grant for getting up the Christmas lights ahead of time, and, you know, it seems like each year, we're adding more and more to Main Street, and I think it shows, especially when you have other events like Light the Night. It really adds to community down on Main Street. We got, they had the little train running so that kids, and then horse-drawn carriage on the other end, so that turned out to be a good evening for the town, plus all the vendors that put together a lot of crafts. It wasn't just commercial stuff, it was all craft, and so that really helped out, too. Thank you again.
Yeah, Cheryl does all that.
I know.
I just say yes.
Yeah. She's got you trained, huh? Okay.
Next is our Public Works with Ronnie Smith.
Good evening, everyone. We'll start with the Waste Department. The plant treated 105 million gallons for all November. Plant cleaning and all buildings, maintenance and preventive maintenance ongoing. Industrial users inspections are all done. Inspecting stormwater outfalls, stormwater employee training. Okay, now for the Street Department. Weather, working weather events, street sweeping, patching potholes, and they're finishing up the last week of yard waste pickup. And now for Water Works. Plant treated 58 million gallons for the month of November. Preventive maintenance ongoing in the distribution, preventive maintenance ongoing in the plants, and the meter readers are finishing up the monthly reads. And that's all I have.
Any?
Thanks, Ronnie.
Any questions?
Thank you for the reminder about yard waste, last week of yard waste, so if you have yard waste after this, bring it on down to the Streets Department.
Yeah. Are you, are you picking up trees after Christmas? What's the, what's the?
They do, they do that, yeah.
Okay.
There'll be a press release at the end of the month.
We have a big bonfire or something on that?
Yeah, we do.
Two-point-er.
Well, I just want to say Merry Christmas and Happy New Year's to everybody.
You too, Ronnie, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ronnie. All right, our Town Manager Report with Grant.
Yeah, I just have two, two items this evening, so we will be putting out a press release probably the end of this week for our third Resident Academy session. We will accept those applications through about the second week of January. As long as we have under 30 or 35 folks, we will accept everyone to the program. Our goal is to start that, I believe it should start on January the 21st next month, so that is a six-week program. It will run through, we're moving it up one week earlier this year to try and, people come better when they don't have anything nice or fun to do, if that makes sense, so as the weather gets warmer, it gets harder and harder for folks to come, so we're just bumping it back a little bit, but we're excited about that. We've had about 60 residents who have graduated from that program, and I think it's a good, a good program that offers a lot of insight into what we do. The only other thing that I have, and now I'm forgetting what I have, oh, the food drive ends, I know Cheryl already mentioned that, but the food drive does end this Friday. So that's all I've got this evening, thank you.
Thank you, Grant. Report from council members, and we'll start with Councilor Sarah Gardner.
Nothing tonight.
All right, thank you. Councilor Sean Harrell?
Nothing for me tonight.
Councilor Noblet?
Just a couple of things. I think with all the leaves down, making sure that everybody keeps their pursuers and things clear of the leaves, it's a tough time, you know, either get a sweeper out and take care of that, make sure that we're ready for winter, and from that standpoint. Also, I appreciate the job. I know that, that first snow, it was, it came at a very quick time, a short period, and it was really cold, and before Rob could get the people out to respond, we had a lot of accidents occurring around Marion County just because of that weather front moved through there. I mean, we do have plenty of salt, and Rob's gonna, you know, get his crystal ball out and try to figure out when's a good time to get the people working at night and stay ahead of it, from that standpoint. Also, I want to thank all those workers that helped out for Light the Night. It takes a lot of people to put that together and to help clean up afterwards, from that standpoint. I want to thank Dalarra for, again, allowing us to use their building so that the kids are inside, not for all of it, they had a choir, but all the event spaces that go on there, that makes, that's a big difference, and I know it, they had a couple employees there that were helping out, making sure that stuff went around, so that's a good thing. And then, plus the fact that we've got Purdue moving into that space, and hopefully we can continue to use that, at least for that one night, and, but I'm looking forward to added Purdue experience on Main Street. I think it will be a very good addition to Main Street from that standpoint. That's all I have.
All right, thank you. Vice President Sturgeon?
Nothing for me tonight.
All right, well, with that, our 20th meeting of 2024 is adjourned at 7:48 PM. Well, with that, our 20th meeting of 2024 is adjourned at 7:48 PM.